Okay, where's? Where's Wayne? I call this meeting to order the North Adams City Council a regular meeting for November 28, 2023. Will the court please take the roll?
Barbo, here. Blackmire?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Harpen?
Here.
Obasahan? Oleskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson is here, but...
But he's not here. Just acknowledge the time when he comes in.
Okay.
Um, so we have a quorum. Moment of silent remembrance. Okay, I've got a long list. So I'd like to remember Virginia Jarrett. She was an employee of the North Adams Public Schools. Mary Caffey was an employee of the North Adams Public Schools. Mark Mundy was an employee of the public schools. Richard McCarthy was our former Veterans Agent for the city. Madeline Taft was a member of the Who's a Water Quality District. Brian Collins worked for the North Adams, was a North Adams firefighter. Patricia Chandler worked for the North Adams Public Schools. Robert Marazie was a member of the North Adams Board of Registars. And I mentioned Shirley Davis, obviously, and all the work she did with the UNO neighborhood group last year, last week. So please rise and remember these people. And the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of October 10?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Discussion? This is a roll call vote because we have a remote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Here, yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade? Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmire?
Yes. Nine, eight yeas, motion carries. Hearing of visitors on items on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak for two minutes to the council on items that are actually listed on our agenda. You want to approach the microphone? Give your name and address for the record? Okay. And then, hearing done, I'm going to open a public hearing. Council Paper 12,00326, Mayor's Communication Number 101, for the public hearing to set the tax classification for the fiscal year 2024. Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor Blackmire. So we're here tonight with Jessica Linkort, who is our assessor, our Board of Assessors, as well as the financial team, to make a recommendation to the city council for the fiscal year 2024 tax rate. Dave, could you go to the next slide? All of you have packets on your table, just in case you have a hard time reading the screen. So the goal of the public hearing, obviously, is to adopt a tax rate, and we do that by determining the tax levy percentages and the residential factor. This public hearing is required by Massachusetts general law. Our tax rate is set based on the valuations determined by the Board of Assessors and then approved by the Department of Revenue. And the actual tax rate needs to be enacted and approved by the city council. Next slide, please. So the process is the assessor determines each value of each property. We classify them into the appropriate categories, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. We submit the total valuation to DLS, Division of Local Services, and get their approval, which we did at the end of October. And then they determine what our minimum residential factor for the city is. So tonight, we're here for the step that has the arrow, the first gray area, and that is to hold the public tax hearing. And then hopefully tonight, we will set the fiscal year 2024 tax rate. Next slide, please. So considerations, we need to look at the residential factor. We need to determine the shift between resident, open space, and commercial. We need to determine the CIP shift, which is commercial, industrial, and personal property shift. And then we have to understand that we can only shift up to 175%, which most of you know from last year. Next slide, please. So where we ended last year was the council recommended, and we approved, a shift of 1.715 and a residential factor of .8061, with the rates of 1767 per thousand for residential and 3760 for commercial, industrial, and personal property. As we know from last year, if you could go to Slide 6. As you know, from last year, the majority of the council wanted to see the commercial rate reduced, and there was a lot of discussion at, I believe it was a finance committee. So this year, when we looked at the numbers, we took into consideration all of the comments from last year, as well as the administration wanted to keep our commitment to keep residential increases as reasonable as possible. And when I talk about what we talked about last year, for those of you who weren't here, there was a desire of the majority of the city council to be sensitive to the impact on the commercial rate. With this, our recommendation is based on where we landed last year with a 1.715 shift. This will create a residential factor. Could you go to the next slide? I'm sorry, one slide, go back, Dave, I'm sorry. This will create a new rate of $17.14 per thousand for residential and open space. It's a 53 cent reduction in the tax rate. And then for a commercial, it's a reduction of $1.26 for a new rate of $36.34. So Jessica will talk tonight about the values and how we got to come to these numbers, and then answer any questions that you may have about valuations and things like that. Jess?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody who came tonight. Most of the community isn't here, so I appreciate you guys coming. This slide is our valuation-based summary for fiscal years 2020 to 2024. So as you can see, over the last five fiscal years, the residential values have increased consistently. This year, the entire residential category value is $794,84194, which is an overall increase of 6.9% in that category. Not as horrifying as last year. Open space, we actually don't have a category for open space. Any sort of open space land is usually categorized under residential or commercial industrial, so that's why that is blank. Commercial values for this year, that category went up about 3.7% overall. This year's value for the commercial category, $122,393,342. Industrial category also went up a little bit, about 3.6% for a value of $25,514,800. And then personal property went up significantly. That category is up about 9.7%. That is due to a lot more personal property accounts, new accounts this year. We closed 17 from last year, but then we gained 30, which was really nice. A lot of that is due to our 504 utilities, which are public utilities, Berkshire Gas, New England Power, Mass Electric. That contributed about 3.1 million to the increase in valuation. As well as to Mesquite Wellness, they have significant personal property, and it's all brand-new. They contributed about 1.5 million to that category. So overall, our total values for the classes this year is $1,7025,279. David, could you go over the next slide, please? This slide is our fiscal year 2024 tax-based growth summary. That is new growth, which is basically new construction, additions, alterations, new businesses. Last year, our new growth was only about 4.1 million. This year, I'm happy to say it's $7,476,425 in value, which in tax dollars equates to about $247,787. We get to that number based on last year's tax rates because we haven't yet set the tax rate for this fiscal year, which is why we're here tonight. Next slide, David. So counselors, so this is our fiscal year 2024 residential tax scenarios. I believe in your counselor packets, I think we gave you like eight different scenarios, but we can't fit eight different scenarios onto this slide. So we gave you four different ones. Last year fiscal year 23, our shift was 1.715. We had 2,646 single home parcels. Single family residential value last year total was $515,213,200. So last year, the average single-family value was $194,713.98. That's gone up a little bit this year. The single-family residential value category is up to $546,143,700. We do have a few less parcels this year. We have 2,641. That is because we had five demolitions of single-family homes. We had one that went exempt because the city took possession via land court. But then we did get one added. It was a two-family, it was converted to a one-family. So that's how we came to that number. So this year, the average single-family residential value is $206,794.28. I come to that number by taking the number of the single-family residential category and dividing it by the number of parcels. So that's up a little bit this year. Our tax rate we're suggesting is suggesting is 1714 per thousand for residential rate. That would make the average single-family tax bill $3,544.45, which would be an annual increase of $103.85 for the average single-family homeowner. So if you have a $400,000 house, now a $206,000 house, your bill might go up a little more. But if you have an $80,000 house, your bill probably won't go up as much. So $103.85 a year, that equates to about $8.65 a month, or 28 cents a day. Still an increase. I know it's not what anybody wants, but it's not as drastic as last year, so I'm happy to say that. David, next slide, please. These are our fiscal year 2024 tax share options. Like I said, in your counselor packets, I believe we gave you like eight different options, but we can't fit eight options on this. We put the one we wanted, the 1.715, along with a few other options for you to look at. So by choosing the 1.715 CIP shift, the residential category will be paying 63.8339% of the taxes. We don't have an open-space category, that's why they're zero. The commercial category would be paying 20.8393% of the taxes. Industrial category, 4.3443% of the taxes. And personal property, 10.9825% of the taxes for the city. And the residential factor would be .8089. Next slide, David. Tax rate comparison fiscal year 23, which was last fiscal year, compared to this fiscal year, fiscal year 24. Last year's residential open-space tax rate was 1767. And by choosing the shift of 1.715, the residential tax rate for this year would be $17.14, which is a reduction of 53 cents per thousand. Commercial, industrial, personal property, last year, the tax rate for them was 3760, and this year would be 3634, which is a reduction of $1.26. If we had a single tax rate, just so all of you know, you might not have this in your packets, a single tax rate would be $21.19 for this year. David, you're so good. Once again, just reiterating what Mayor Maxi said, fiscal year 2024 recommendation, we keep the CIP shift the same as last year at the 1.715. The residential factor would be .8089, 1714 for residential tax rate, and 3634 for the commercial, industrial, personal property. David, next. These are the tax rates for 2014 to 2024 fiscal years. Just a little historical data in case you were curious. The rates were a little bit lower about 10 years ago, and then they steadily increased for a bit, but they have been decreasing over the last five years or so. That's primarily due to the increase in assessments, but it's good that the tax rate is going down, so I'm pretty excited about that. Common questions. So I was talking to the mayor last week, and I told her, you know, there's a lot of questions that people ask me all the time, so I kind of wanted to put these up here. I'm just going to read verbatim what I wrote, and then, you know, I might elaborate a little bit here. Question one, "I have not made any improvements to my property, so why did my assessed value increase?" Because I am the meanest lady in North Adams, that's why. Not really. "Per the Assessment Administration Law Procedures and Valuations Handbook issued by the Division of Local Services through the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, assessors are required by Massachusetts law to assess all real and personal property at its fair cash value as of January 1st each year. Fair cash value means fair market value, which is the price a willing buyer and a willing seller would settle upon in an open-market transaction. To determine fair market value, assessors must evaluate a number of factors that impact the amount a willing buyer and seller would agree to, including sales, location, supply, and demand." In common terms, because that can be a little jumbled and confusing, our property sales data is the primary reason for the increase and decrease in assessed values. If properties are routinely selling over their assessed values, this indicates that our assessed values should be increased to reflect the fair market value. It is also important to note that the Department of Revenue also analyzes our sales data to make sure we are not over-assessing or under-assessing properties. And I say this because some people think I just pull numbers out of the air, and I'm like, let's do this. That's not what I do. Question two, "Why aren't properties that are used as Airbnbs classified commercially intact at the commercial rate?" All properties that are used for residential purposes, whether for short-term or long-term residential use, have to be classified as residential intact at the residential rate. The argument is often, the owners of Airbnbs are making a profit by renting their properties. However, in a similar fashion, owners of a residential apartment building can also make a profit by renting their properties. We cannot classify and tax an owner of a residential property used as an Airbnb differently than any other residential property owner. I did ask some other assessors about this also, just so you know, in other communities, just to make sure I wasn't missing something. We are all in agreement on this. If the Department of Revenue comes down with a different law or different standards, then we will, you know, alternate our course at that time. But right now, this is what we have to do. Oh, this is a long one, because I have a couple notes on here. "Why doesn't Mass Moca have to pay taxes?" "Per the Assessment Administration Law Procedures and Valuations Handbook issued by the Division of Local Services through the DOR, properties that may qualify for exemption from local property taxes include public land and facilities, hospitals, schools, churches, and cultural institutions. Because a museum is considered a cultural institution, it is tax-exempt. That being said, it is important to note that any property owner who claims that their property is a church or museum or school doesn't automatically qualify for exempt status. The individual or organization would have to provide documentation to support the claim of tax-exempt status. The Board of Assessors would also have to review the documentation and inspect the property to approve such status." I put a little note here. I understand there's been discussion about a pilot with Mass Moca. That is a conversation that needs to be initiated by the mayor and by the city council with Mass Moca. It's not something I can do myself. You don't want me going rogue like that, so hopefully that's something we can focus on in the next fiscal year. I also put a note here, "Please note the law, Mass Moca is tax-exempt. Anytime it leases any of its spaces to non-exempt entities, such as retail stores, restaurants, or other businesses, those spaces within Moca become taxable. Those tenants then begin paying real estate taxes on the space that they lease. Those businesses are also subject to taxes on personal property associated with those businesses." Sometimes that's not clear for the public. They think everything over there is tax-exempt and nobody pays anything. But the people who do come in and lease do have to pay taxes. Finally, question four. "I believe my property is over-assessed. How do I remedy that?" If you believe your property is over-assessed, you have the legal right to file for an abatement for the current fiscal year, so not like 2007, with the assessor's office from January 1st to the end of business day on February 1st. If February 1st falls on a non-business day, you can file through the end of business day on whatever date the next business day falls. Abatement forms are generally available in my office, usually the last week of December. If you want to come in and grab one, feel free. If you can't make it in, if you want me to mail it to you, email it to you, I can do that also. Once you file for the abatement, I will send you a letter acknowledging receipt of your application, and I will request an inspection of the inside and outside of your property at a mutually convenient date and time. Upon inspection, the assessor will present the abatement application and inspection details to the Board of Assessors for a vote. I don't mind coming out to look at your properties. I'm not mad at you if you file for an abatement, but it's about your property being overvalued. It's not because you don't like your tax bill. I don't like my tax bill, but it is what it is. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me about it. Just don't put on your application, "I don't like my tax bill," because we're probably going to deny it. I hate speaking in front of the public, so thank you guys for listening. I appreciate it. I am here for any questions, Congress. Do we do that after, Lisa?
I was gonna do it now. Questions from the council to start with. Counselor Bona?
Through the chair. Thank you.
No problem.
Big difference between when you first started doing this, you are smooth.
Was I smooth last time or smooth tonight?
No, just saying, you got it down good.
Good. I appreciate that.
And probably, like I say, it was nice that you answered some questions that do typically come up. Not that we need it for this, but I know last year you did provide me with a copy that also showed how some of our properties are broken down, how many residential's, how many nonprofits, how many commercial, how many, you know, and just it'd be something just, it's good knowledge just for us to know, so it doesn't matter for tonight, but if that's just...
I do have it in here, actually, so I can make you a copy right after the meeting.
Okay. If you don't, do you have that handy in front of you?
I do. Please hold.
If you just remind me, because I know you listed, like with Mass Moca, and you said some of the types of properties that are not taxed, and, I mean, there are also other, and I don't know if there's a big difference between a nonprofit and a not-for-profit, if they're the same when it comes to taxes or not, but...
Not really. So nonprofit status doesn't necessarily equate to tax-exempt status in terms of real estate. It mostly depends on use.
But there are other, so there are other properties, for example, that, you know, we might have lost a few this last year that came off either commercial or residential that went to nonprofit status. And, but also, like, for example, I know the, like, the ambulance expanded, and it, that, that new building became, is...
Tax-exempt.
Tax-exempt. And, you know, in the past, for example, much of the Price Chopper building is tax-exempt, correct, because of Wimstown Theater Festival?
Correct.
Yeah.
So a portion of it is tax-exempt, but the portion that has the restaurant in it...
Similar to Moca. Right, yeah, okay. But again, I appreciate everything you've done here, and I, and I do hope in the future, Airbnbs or short-term housing is looked at a little different by the state. One of the other issues is if we do classify them as commercial properties, that can create some zoning...
Correct.
Issues because they officially are in residential areas, so. All right, thank you.
No problem. Would you like the breakdown right now?
Oh, yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, so for exempt properties this year, there are 358 in this city. That doesn't mean there's 358 separate exempt entities. A lot of those are actually city-owned properties. One of my goals for next year, and I believe it's Mayor Maxi's goal too, is to get rid of some of the stuff that the city owns. We own a lot of small, tiny, useless pieces of land that we could probably sell through in a butter sale or an auction. I hesitated this year having an auction because I'm waiting for some things to come out of land court. Those are things the city is foreclosing on for back taxes, and there's one land court in the whole state, and they take their time. We have a piece of land that was entered, I believe, in April of 2019 that's still in there. We're still waiting for the judgment to come down. Also, those houses on Church Street that everybody talks about, those were entered into land court in September of 2021, and we're still waiting on a judgment for those. So that's why I kind of hesitated last year. I'd like to have those come out of land court and have a really, really good auction, so we can get some things back on the tax rolls.
So 358 was, is under tax-exempt?
Correct.
How many commercial?
How many commercial properties do we have this year? We have 256. An industrial, it looks like we have 65. 130-132, that's the code for land, just residential land, and 106 is also in that category. That's an outbuilding. We have 884 of those parcels. We have 179 four-plus-family apartment buildings. We have 182 three-families, 615 two-families, 42 miscellaneous residential, which is mobile home parks and properties that are one lot but might have a couple buildings on them, 42 of those. We have 86 condos and 2,641 single-family homes.
And do we know, I know last year the number seemed low with second home, second homeowners?
So it's not my favorite, and I'm going to tell you why. It's a whole lot of squeeze and not a lot of juice. This isn't Nantucket, this isn't Martha's Vineyard. The Obamas do not vacation here and bring their good personal property with them. Most of the personal property that comes here, it's regular, everyday furniture, Walmart dishes, so I haven't really concentrated on that this year. I do have an ongoing list of people that I think are second homeowners. The problem with that list is that it's always changing. I had three different properties on there this year where the people called and they're like, oh, we're living in the house. We live here now, we're not second homeowners. You know, initially, I thought they were because of their residential mailing address and the deed, but now they're, they're North Adams residents, which we like. The other problem I have with billing second homeowners for personal property, I don't know why the DOR says it's okay, because they're all about assessing being fair and equitable, and to me, it's not fair and equitable. You're actually targeting a certain group of people. That being said, it is the law, and I will try to get a few more on there for next year.
Well, and again, to me, it's not all about just getting taxes or billing them. It's just, it'd be good to know, like, how many second homeowners do we have in the city, you know?
I agree.
And last year, I think the number was fairly low.
I think it was pretty low.
So, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
One, the other thing with second homeowners and the deed, sometimes the deed has the address of where the person lives when they buy the house.
Right.
It's a pain to try and track it down. It's hard to track it down sometimes. But my question is, how many plots or lots do we have that are in chapter? Chapter 61, whatever?
This year, we only have one. We had a few others that came out of chapter because the property was sold, and the new owner no longer wanted to continue it in chapter use.
And did we get our clawback?
We did not. KP Law said that because there wasn't a change in use, it was still being used as forest, that we were not going to get a clawback.
They're not my favorite people this week.
I know.
Sorry. Because sometimes that's a chunk of change.
It is.
That you don't expect, so it's always extra money.
And actually, we asked KP Law because, you know, there was some question about whether we should get that or not, but they said no.
Other people have questions?
Yes.
Counselor Barbo?
Yeah. Out of the 256 that are commercial, can you share with us, are those all brick and mortars, or are those businesses?
Those are brick and mortar.
Okay. Do you have a number of businesses?
For personal property? It's broken down kind of differently. So there's 501s, which are like LLCs, you know, individually owned businesses. We have 171 of those. We have 14502s, which are corporations. We have, I'm going to have to break out my other sheet for this one because it breaks it down a little better for me. 503s are manufacturing corporations. 503s are manufacturing corporations. We have zero of those. We have 504s, which are the public utilities, the Berkshire Gas, New England Power, Mass Electric. Altogether, we have, and that also goes with a 550 and 552, I actually have to see what that is, oh, electric generating plant. So those combined, we have seven. We have five 505s, which are centrally-valued telephone. We have one 506, which is a centrally-valued pipeline, and then we have one 508, which is wireless telephone. Those are all personal property accounts.
Thanks.
Councilor Wilkinson.
You mentioned that you had a number for secondary home buyers. Do we have a number that is short-term rentals for people that may live outside of the city?
I don't, but I believe there is something, I don't know if it's on a state website. I think Councilor Barbo brought this up last year.
I, no, I understand it. I was just wondering.
Do I personally know? I don't.
You don't? Okay, answer the question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the public have a comment? Regarding this?
Hi, Eric.
Hey, how are you? Hi, Eric Kearns, 1413 Mass Ave. I know that several years ago, the law was passed so that Airbnb was collecting rooms tax for the state. Is it collecting and remitting it to the city? Local rooms tax?
That is more of a Bev Cooper question.
I can answer that.
There you are.
So there is that additional income from those. Thank you.
They submit it all to the state, and then the state pays us, like, four to six months later, after they get it. Any other questions, comments? Okay, without objection, I will close the public hearing and move on to the agenda.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Do you have a question, Ashley?
I do, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, sorry.
To the chair, my first question is, right now, the number to the average increase, do we have a median number available?
I did not calculate the median for this meeting, but I would be happy to do so for you.
Okay.
It's just a little more in-depth because I have to do a whole array.
Okay, yes, do we know, based on the calculation and the number of properties, how many properties would actually experience an increase versus a decrease?
How many? Most of them. Mostly, everybody's assessments are going up a little bit. I know there were a couple of neighborhoods, one specifically being East Quincy Street, south of Summit Ave, where I did adjust the neighborhood code, so those assessments went down a little bit, but after we did our analysis, they still increased a little bit, so they're probably not, you know, going to have as big of a tax bill increase as the average homeowner, but they're still going to have a slight increase.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Would you know the same numbers for the commercial? How many would go up versus now?
Not off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Thank you. And on my last question, whether you can answer this, or maybe the mayor can, how many commercial properties or businesses do we currently have that have a tax-free agreement simply?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the question was. How many? We have one. Greylock Works with a TIF, and then-
Just Greylock Works?
Yes, and tourists, but that doesn't start until, what, fiscal '26, I think we said, or fiscal '27? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shade. Sorry, I'm not used to having people remotely. It's been a while. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, then I will now close, without objection, close the public hearing, and move on to the, move on to the agenda. Okay. Counsel, without objection, I think I'll move the order authorizing the tax levy up, if no one minds. That way, all of the City Hall staff doesn't have to sit through zoning changes. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm going to move ahead to Council Paper 12,00326, an order authorizing the mayor to establish for fiscal 2024 the tax levy for residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. And I just have to get to that paperwork. Councilor Wilkinson.
This is something I can make a motion on?
We would need a motion on the table.
Yep, I would like to make a motion, the tax levy be 1.70.
Tax split.
Yes, 1.70.
Do we have a second? Anyone? On the motion to, oh, wait a minute, what, I'm trying to find it in here.
Motion fails.
Okay, well, I didn't know, I already seemed to be looking for it, so I wasn't sure if they were.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt. That failed.
Second.
Discussion?
Does this adapt the motion for the 1.715?
Correct.
Is that what you're?
Yep.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
Can I take a repeat of the rate proposed?
The proposed in our papers is 1.715, the same as last year.
And I want the third motion?
There's, a motion was made by Councilor Alaskowitz and seconded by Councilor Bona.
Or not great.
For that rate, or as the papers are presented, so that's the rate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would just like, through the chair, to thank everybody for their hard work. I'm sure this was, it's been a lengthy process, and you're all tired, and thank you very much.
I would like to obviously thank the staff, but I do have a question. I know last year, when we went from 1.68, your proposal was 1.75. We compromised in the middle, and the conversation was that you would like to move, move it back toward the 1.68 at some point. What kind of, are we, what timeframe are we looking at changing it and moving it down?
It really depends on where our values go. We're really being sensitive to the cost to residents and business owners. We're hoping that, you know, our sales data either stabilizes or maybe gets back to what we call normal. Wayne is shaking his head no, so he would know better than I, but we are really focused on trying to keep things as reasonable, and also taking into account what the majority of the council wanted was trying to see a little more reduction on the commercial side. But at the same time, we want to be sensitive to our residents that really have some high needs and are struggling.
Thank you for that. I'd also like to comment on the fact that if we took the 2014 year of 15.92 and adjusted it for inflation, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the rate just adjusted for inflation, nothing else, would be 20.94, so I think we're doing a pretty good job of controlling our taxes. Because that's really high to me. Anything over, when you hit over 20, it's high. So, we have a motion and a second. No more questions or comments. This doesn't have to, does it have to be published or anything?
No.
No, it's just an order.
But it has to be-
Roll call vote, I know that. Plus, it has to be roll call because we're remote. Roll call vote.
Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yeah.
Wilkinson?
No.
Blackmire?
Yes.
Six yeas.
Six yeas, motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, if you want to take a second and, unless you've got something else on the agenda here for you, welcome to. Okay. I gave you an opportunity. Okay, so let's get back to the regular agenda items. Council Paper 12,218, an order amending Chapter 23, the taxi ordinance passed to a second reading and posted as a municipal bulletin with a return date of October 28th. The motion to adopt would be in order.
Motion to, motion to adopt?
Motion and a second?
Second. Second.
Can't hear me? Couldn't hear me?
Okay, discussion on this?
We started at the same time.
I think, yeah. So we have a motion and a second. Councilor Wilkinson, Councilor Sapienza. Any discussion on this? This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yeah.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmire?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,305, an ordinance amending Chapter 1, general provisions, Section 5, recordation of ordinances, passed to a second reading and published as required by law, required by law as amended at the meeting of October 24th, published on November 17th with a return date of November 28th. The motion to adopt would be in order.
Motion to adopt? Second.
Councilor Alaskowitz, Councilor Sapienza. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yeah.
Was that a yes or a no?
It was a yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmire?
Yes, eight yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,322, an ordinance to amend Chapter Z by adding new section title, Section 9.5 entitled Hospital Overlay, Hospital Avenue Overlay District by adding new Hospital Avenue Overlay District under Section 2.1 Overlay Zoning District by adding new footnotes, footnote 6 to Appendix B of Chapter Z and to amend zoning map dated May 25, 2021, to include the Hospital Overlay District, passed to a second reading and published as required by law with a return date of November 28th. Motion to adopt would be in order.
Motion to adopt? Second.
Councilor Sapienza, Councilor Wilkinson. Yes, any discussion?
There are problems?
Did you? Yep, I'm ready.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yeah.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmire?
Yes, eight yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,329, Mayor's Communication 102 to Grant an Easement to Blackington Mill LLC and Blackington Backwoods LLC. Without objection, I'll file the communication. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilor Blackmire. So, on your tables tonight is an amendment to the council order. I know it's unusual for me to make an amendment. We submitted the papers right before Thanksgiving and have had ongoing conversations with tourists and their legal team and our legal team. So before you tonight, I'm asking the council if you would allow to have an amendment, so we can continue on with the negotiations of the easement, and tourists can continue on with their project. This is generally taken care of at the time of sale, but unfortunately, it was not included in the documents, so one would think that this would kind of be just a granting of permission for us to continue on with our work with tourists. So if it's okay, counselor, I'd like to just read it into the record, or you can all read it, and I don't have to read it into the record, but I'd like to, just for the general public, to hear if that is permissible.
Thank you.
That the- Sorry. That the city of North Adams, acting by and through its mayor, be and hereby authorized to grant easements to Blackington Mill LLC and Blackington Backwoods LLC, each a Massachusetts Limited Liability Company with a principal place of 38 Newbury Street, Boston, Massachusetts, over, across, and upon, but excluding the subsurface and not under those certain parcels of land commonly known as Hyde Hill, being furtherly described in the deed, and also the Trail Race being freely described in the city deed recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Such easement shall be for the perpetual right and easement engross, number one, to use Hyde Hill land for access to the Hoozie River and general recreational purposes, and any other use or purpose that complies applicable legal rights and is approved in writing by the mayor, and number two, to use the Trail Race land for any use or purpose that complies with applicable legal requirements and is approved by the mayor. The easement shall be subject to a trail easement for active and passive recreational purposes in common with the general public, to be laid out in such locations on such terms as the mayor and Blackington Mill LLC and Blackington Backwoods LLC shall reasonably agree. No such easement shall include terms of conditions that shall prevent the city from applying for grant fundings. The city shall not use Hyde Hill and the Trail Race land, and shall not grant the rights to use Hyde Hill and Trail Race land to any third party for the purposes, for any purposes but out prior written consent of Blackington Mill and Blackington Backwoods LLC, which consent shall be unreasonably withheld. The easement shall be subject to city council or city solicitor approval and shall be recorded in the Registry of Deeds. So, the gist of this is, we obviously want, I obviously want to continue to support the tourist expansion, and we also kind of want to protect that land, so no one, a next administration or another city council can come in and take away the rights that the tourist already has. I always refer them as the tourist. So this is just really shoring up what has been discussed. This is allowing us to enter into an easement agreement, most of which has been drafted, and we just need to execute. But I can't execute an easement without your permission. It's similar to what we did for the land that Yenamore owned, as well as the property that we had on the West End that was built on city property, but we want to ensure that the tourist property and the connecting properties are secure, and they're able to develop the resort, and also protect their resort from anything or everything that may come down the road. The key to this is that we all, one thing we do agree is about the future bike path, and, you know, this will help us work with tourists to get that project done. In addition, I think it's important to say that, you know, why, I'll just say this, the city solicitor doesn't want us to use the word exclusive rights. This, I feel, somewhat protects tourists from anyone coming in and accessing this property without them knowing or us knowing. So it doesn't prevent, it doesn't, it prevents us from a future generation developing that that will hinder the progress of tourists and the future development thereof. We still have some details to work out. I wish this was all taken care of way back when, but here we are at the 11th hour, again, and my apologies to tourists, but we need to get this done, so we can execute the easement, and Ben can go forward with his plans.
Okay.
Again.
Okay.
And again. And again.
I'd like to get some clarification also from the party involved, so. Name, address for the record, please.
You're welcome to use my podium.
Thank you. Hello, I am The Tourist. So local? Not so local, I'm at 91 Col Ave, but our business is at 900 State Road in North-
Okay, and your name?
Oh, Ben Svenson.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. It is such a privilege to be here and see all the work that you all do to support the city, and thank you. Your presentation was fun. That was legitimately fun.
Thank you.
And I'm so grateful to be able to, just to play a role in this community, and I hope to make beautiful buildings that we all can share. That's sort of what I can do, if given the opportunity. And on the topic of given the opportunity, the only thing I'd like to add to Jen's description of what we're doing here is, maybe just to zoom out and describe what we're doing a little bit, which is that basically, the city is taking, or took title of a piece of land, and then created an exclusive easement back to us to be able to use that land, because it's in the heart of our resort property. We reached an agreement in November that I can read to this language that describes how this easement will go into effect. how this easement will go into effect. It's actually an easement that was put into place in 2015 and governs other land that we had worked out with the city, so it's really just extending that pre-existing easement onto these properties. The area of concern with the attorney is very real for me, which is that this easement was already agreed upon. It's not really a topic of conversation and that agreement was the understanding upon which we passed title to the city. We wouldn't have passed title to the city but for our exclusive use of that property indefinitely for obvious reasons. It's in the middle of our hotel. So the important thing for me to communicate is just my gratitude to be here and the hope that the city will work with the mayor to grant this easement and to clarify that the exclusive nature of it is what exists today with the landowner. We don't own one of these major parcels. We have an exclusive easement and it will allow us to effectively be a landowner of that parcel. And then we will create an easement for the bike trail, which will mean that that segment, which it's a MASTIOT process, I don't know what the width of it is, but they have to determine what that is, and we will grant an easement then to MASTIOT to ride the bike trail through the property. But it's not the case that the city has somehow come into possession of these acreage and can use it. The city is, has a limited use ability and they have an incredible tool chest and in our collaboration, this complicated process has put us in a position to apply for EPA funds, which I'm cautiously optimistic will be successful in securing, but it's very important that I convey the exclusive nature of this easement and the desire that we, in keeping with our agreement of November last year, step one was that the CP development land go to the city, which has happened. Step two is the Trail Race land goes to the city. And step three is the Blackington Mill easement. In order to facilitate Blackington Backwoods continuing development of the CP development land and Trail Race land of a multi-use path and hospitality operations, the city and Blackington Backwoods affiliate, Blackington Mill, wish to amend that certain easement agreement dated October 27, 2015, recorded with the registry in Book 1592, page 855, regarding the use of land adjacent to the Blackington Mill located at 1470 Massachusetts Avenue, to include the grant to Blackington Backwoods of the right to use the CP development land and Trail Race for all purposes permitted under applicable legal requirements subject to the existing allocation of environmental responsibilities and liabilities contained in the easement. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Okay, and I also want to be able to answer any questions because, any questions?
Are there questions of either the mayor or tourists?
And we have copies of those, that document that he just ran.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to bring this document into the record if that's possible.
Yeah, make sure the clerk has one.
That's the memorandum that's from the section is highlighted. And then this is the actual reason agreement, the priorities to the reason agreement that would be amended.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want plenty.
What's that?
I said one's plenty.
No, there's two different.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have that. And I make sure we save a copy for the clerk. So does?
So I'd like to make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a change of language and grant easement. Second.
I guess, I actually have a legal question, sort of. I know that our lawyer crossed off exclusive and then down the bottom, it says the city shall not use the Hyde Hill and Trail Race land and shall not grant the rights to use the Hyde Hill and Trail Race land to any third party for any purpose without prior written consent of Blackington Mill LLC and Blackington Backwoods. Does that not kind of make it exclusive? I mean, I'm trying to make this work, obviously.
Yeah, it is an exclusive easement. It can only be an exclusive easement. That's the understanding by which we did all these steps. So the fact that the city's attorney has decided to visit this issue for the first time since August 2022 when he got the easement is his timeline, but it's not necessarily, our organization is not open to revisiting the terms of that easement, if that makes sense, because it's quite constant.
I guess I'm trying to understand, one, it would be too bad the attorney's not here, but the difference in definition to exclusive and then basically...
I guess what I'm saying is we wouldn't, we wouldn't accept the exclusive being crossed out. Sorry to interrupt you. I know that the city's attorney did that, but we wouldn't accept that today for obvious reasons, you know?
I didn't get a copy of, I don't have a copy of the original. Those, are those the extras?
And if I could, Counselor Blackmere, and that's why we added the last statement, so it indirectly is a partnership with us and that I'm just concerned that in the future, I don't want something to go back there without, you know, tourists being part of that discussion, if at all. My hope is that it stays the way it is and that it becomes our bike path and it becomes a star resort, a top-notch resort. We're just, Ben can elbow me, we do this all the time. We're just really trading the word exclusive for that statement down below. The intention is never ever, my intention, and I hope the council's intention is never to infringe on this property because as you know, it's a beautiful resort and, you know, we kind of, Kathy and I talked about it today, we kind of have this image of like a canyon ranch where it's encapsulated and it probably is. Right. But everyone on the legal side is hung up on the word exclusive, except for Ben and his staff.
Well, I'm just, I'm just reiterating those unflungible.
That says exclusive.
Yeah, it is only exclusive and we would have to unwind all of our work if it were anything but.
Right, and we don't want to do that. Let me be very clear, we certainly don't want to do that.
So the easement exists, the language is there.
But may I just add that, so this...
To the mic, set of people at home, can you?
I'm sorry. This council order is to give me permission to execute an easement. We are hopeful, very hopeful, that we can get the words smitting down between all of the attorneys and come to a resolution that satisfies tourists and gives us security of the future. That's our main goal and I certainly don't want to put anything back there. I'm glad to unload the property and have you use it and make it functional and beautiful, but we are also wordsmithing with two attorneys at the 11th hour, which is quite frankly annoying to me. But the council purpose is to give me permission to enter into the easement and to continue the conversation that we've had over the last three hours today. So that's kind of where we're at. I certainly am not discouraging tourists' project. I'm certainly not trying to hinder it, even though we say let's move faster, but I just need permission to enter into this easement and we still have to work out a few details, but nothing is, I don't, I mean, I don't think it's a showstopper, but it needs to be done tonight by midnight.
Well, there are no details to work out. Our agreement specifies an easement from 2015 that's then extended to cover the new properties and, and we understandably passed title of that property to the city thinking this was already resolved. We thought the last hearing that this was all done, maybe you all did too, and the city attorney said, no, you didn't say the word easement, so you have to go back. And that's why we're here, not to revisit the terms of that. And the way the city solicitor's doing that is his own practice, but it's very unusual.
Well, and, you know, I understand where we've got so many different, I mean, you've got the lawyer that did this, who was not KP Law, if I remember correctly, they...
It was John DeRosa.
Okay, that's what I thought. It was John DeRosa who was the attorney at the time and then your lawyers?
Same attorney for me here.
Okay, and then now we've got Attorney Ead.
Attorney, Ms. Ead is not acting as an attorney.
Okay.
His name is Lee?
KP Law.
Yeah, no, KP Law, but, you know, so then there was all this wordsmithing. I understand that if we've got, we have $17 million at stake here in investments in the community. We've also got, it, the easement is, this is the original language, I'm not sure why it hasn't kind of followed through and if it was so offensive, why it took this long for KP Law to get back to us on it.
There's actually not...
But I also don't, you know, I, I have no problem giving them exclusive. They're putting seven, they already own the land, they gave it to the city so it could get cleaned up. They're prop, they're putting $17 million into the property in the next 10, 20 years. I don't want to discourage that kind, I don't want to chase away that kind of investment. So I do have an issue with the language of the easement and I know that normally we do have the language when we're voting, I think. I don't honestly remember back to 2015.
I have the order.
No, no, that's fine, that's just...
Okay, you're the president.
I know, I was the president back in 2015. So, I don't know. You've got a motion and a second on the table. Do you have any questions for any of the parties involved? So the motion is to adopt the order, giving the mayor permission to enter into the easement. It's a roll call.
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yeah.
Wilkinson?
I must abstain.
Blackmere?
Yes, but I hope that you guys can come to a resolution on this. I don't want to, this project is, I've never seen, I mean, this is a big project compared to some of the things we've had in the city, but it seems like we keep getting this piecemeal when it kind of all should have been one package. So I hope you guys can work this out because I want to see this project move forward. So motion carries.
Communication, order, wait, was that the communication? Did we bring the order up or did we just do the communication?
Did the communication?
Okay, let's, I'm sorry, we didn't need to vote on that communication, that's my mistake. I lost track of the process. Council Paper 12,00329, an order granting easement to Blackington Mill LLC and Blackington, Blackington Backwoods LLC. We've got the copy of it. We, do we have, we want to redo the motion and the order?
I'll make motion to adopt the amended language and grant the easement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Bona. Discussion? Roll call vote.
Just point of clarification, it is permission for this mayor to be authorized to execute the easement. We are not actually granting the physical easement tonight.
Granting easement, okay, that's what the paper said, that's why, I read what was in my paper, sorry.
Preword in my motion? Good idea.
Move to adopt the order, I guess is what the motion should be.
Move to adopt the order. Second.
Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yeah.
Wilkinson?
Abstain.
Blackmere?
Yes, seven yeas, one abstention, motion carries. Again, reiterate, let's make this work. Council Paper 12,00330, Mayor's Communication 103 on the Reappointment of Eric Wilson to Serve as a Member of the Commission on Disabilities for a Term to Expire December 1, 2026. Without objection, I'll file the communication. A motion to approve would be in order.
Move to approve.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Alesskowitz.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yeah.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmere?
Yes, eight yeas, motion carries.
Council Paper 12,00331, a communication from Counselor Sapienza regarding recommending the Public Safety Committee review the rules, ordinances, and investigate enforcement at the city's gun range on Patterson Road. Without objection, I'll file the communication. Counselor Sapienza, do you have a motion?
Yes, motion to move to refer this to Public Safety with a return date of the first meeting in March.
I could not hear your return date.
First meeting in March.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Barbo?
No, you speak at the beginning or at the end. They spoke because it was their project. Sorry. Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yeah.
Wilkinson?
No.
Blackmere?
Seven yeas, motion carries. Licenses for taxicabs, we have none. We have none for secondhand dealer shops. Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance, so if you have something you want to, if you wanted to share something with that, you can now or you can just stay on top of the meetings and come to the general, the public safety meetings. You can talk, you can speak? Okay, then, then come to the meetings at least, it's a little less formal. Anyone else wish to speak? Mayor's concerns?
Actually, tonight is a concern. So it's been a hot topic on, on Facebook as to what's going on with the YMCA. So the last time we were here, I believe I reported out that we were mobilizing a crew and work was going to get started and all that fun stuff. So on or about November 7th, we expected the roofing company to mobilize and start working on the roof. We were ghosted for a little bit, it took us a couple days to realize that we were ghosted and they finally, after several calls, informed us that they weren't going to do the project. So we are talking with the second bidder, but I have some concerns that the price is a little bit out of reach, so we may need to rebid the project, which is very disappointing. But we, it's not a done deal yet, but we are hopeful that we can turn it around quickly and get the roof fixed. The reality is, we've done everything that we possibly can other than putting me up on the roof and trying to have me fix it. We're kind of at a mercy of the contractors, but this given contractor decided that, that they didn't want to do the job. So we're dealing with the second bidder, price is concerned, and also their availability. So that's kind of where we're at with the Y. Their decision on how to run their operation is totally up to them. They are having some staffing issues and they're not seeing the volume that they usually do because the pool is closed. So it was a truly a good feat effort to try to get this project underway quickly, but that's kind of where we're at. We're trying to either decide whether we're going to rebid or work with the second, the next load, the next bidder. So that's kind of where we're at. So nature of construction.
Yeah. Anything else?
I got lots of things in my head, but that was the biggest thing for tonight.
Committee reports in minutes. Liaison updates, counselors' concerns. Counselor Wilkinson.
I brought this up last time. So this is through the chair to the mayor. Thanks for getting the clock fixed.
It actually was fixed, but it died.
It seems to be the right time. I know, I wasn't going to say it's off, I was surprised, I thought I was, I checked it, it seemed fine.
It seems accurate, relatively accurate.
We need to get more heavy-duty batteries.
Okay, any other? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Actually, I think I can just declare it closed.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmere?
Yes.